Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. We are honored tonight to have several guests, those folks who are leading our parent clubs this year, but we're also honored to have a very special guest with us tonight. Let me tell you, this young man is a sixth grade student at Northfield Elementary School. Teachers Billy Joe Thompson and Tammy Sutton. Gabriel Carver is going to lead us in our pledge followed by a moment of silence, but let me tell you, Gabriel is the countywide Spelling Bee Champion, and we are very honored. After 25 rounds, I think that's correct Gabriel, is it? So we congratulate you. At this time, I'll ask you to please stand as Gabriel leads us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rineer. Second?
Second.
Mr. King and Dr. Brown both, thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. Communication, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, first, I would like to say that we could not do what we do if it weren't for our parents. They are so supportive, not only of their children, which is most important to us, but also of our schools. They, they work tirelessly, and I know that some of you have been parents in the schools, and you know that you work tirelessly. But at this time, I would like to ask for our parents to stand, and I'm going to call you by school, and if you would rise please. I think we have some folks here from Reese Rogers. Thank you very much. Ah, next door, that's handy. Mitchell Nelson? Thank you principal for your woo woo woo, we appreciate that very much. And we have our principal with us from Northfield and his crew, so we'll see if Jean can out do Robin with the woo woo woo. And then finally, we have Scales, would you please stand? Do we have any other schools represented tonight? I know there's some things going on in the schools, but on behalf of the teachers and the principals and the central office staff, I want to thank you for everything you do for the schools. You are there day and night. You do everything from folding paper to wiping noses, to running at the last minute and getting some bakery things, to honoring our teachers. So I want to thank you, and I'm sure that Mr. Campbell would also like to thank you, but on behalf of the staff, certainly thank you for everything you do for us.
Yes ma'am, I will echo what you said as a principal a few years ago for a day or two. We really did appreciate our parent clubs and our PTAs and the officers and the support that you continue to give to the school, and not only to the teachers and the administration, but to the students as well, and also all the other employees that's in the building. Thank you very much. We honor you tonight, and we are glad to have you, and hope you'll come back to see us again real soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, if any of the other board members, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Phillips?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to say, you know, some of our best board members have worked, you know, past PTA and PTO servants, so you know, think about your future. And y'all be great candidates.
Any other comments for board members?
I'll just say thank you, Ms. Phillips.
All right, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, and at this time, if you all would like to leave, you certainly are welcome to leave. If you want to stay, we welcome you to stay, it's entirely up to you, but I know you have children at home that you have to take care of, and you have other things. Oh, that's right. Oh, and TCAP's here. You're exactly right. Thank you all.
I bet we got a few proctors out there.
Yeah, there's some proctors in there all day too. You're exactly right.
For those of you that are leaving, I hope you do well tomorrow on that TCAP test. Go home and study.
We do have several communications tonight. Earlier in the year, Discovery School's sixth graders entered a math competition from Math League, and I actually went online and looked at that and couldn't find a whole lot about it, except that it is, it really is a national and international competition, so I asked Stacy Bird about it. It is a competition for students in the United States, Canada, and other countries, and the students complete the competition in class, and then they upload it online to the Math League contest site. And this year, when the Math League released the top schools in the sixth grade category, Discovery came in fourth out of 35 schools, came in second place in the region, and the states involved in the region included North Carolina, Delaware, and Tennessee. And in addition, there were five Discovery School's sixth grade students who ranked in the top 36 in the league. And I want to read those names. They are Megan Lee, Emma Kate Rosenberg, Webb Dodson, Macy Harris, and Shuren Shaw. So we congratulate Discovery School and those students and the teachers that have worked hard for that, and that is quite an honor. So congratulations, Discovery School. We would like to thank the members of the Murfreesboro Young Professionals for their job that they did at Franklin Heights. This was during the United Way Days of Action, and this occurred on Friday, April the 11th, and so we thank them for their work there. We also would like to thank the following community partners, New Hope Church of God and Christ for their donation to purchase Rover tickets, and then St. Thomas Rutherford and Touch Point Food Service for their donation of over 1,800 pounds of food to supplement the backpack program. So thank you to those organizations. Mitchell Nelson would like to thank the congregations of First Baptist Castle, First Baptist Main Street, and New Vision Baptist for collaborating with the school to create a mentoring program for our students. There are about 40 adults who will be coming once a week to work with the classrooms. And then we certainly want to thank the City Schools Foundation. They do an amazing job for us. One of the things they do is they give parity funds, and this year, they honored the schools with $18,500 in parity checks, and this occurred at a principal's meeting, and those principals were delighted, say the least. They were extremely happy about that funding. We would like to congratulate Mitchell Nelson's Gail Porterfield, who is a sixth grade teacher. She's accepted an invitation to co-teach at a week-long coding camp this summer at MTSU. She will actually be teaching seventh through eighth, excuse me, seventh through 12th grade students in how to use computer coding, and she will be bringing back that knowledge to Murfreesboro, and to Mitchell Nelson is planning on writing some grants, so we expect to see some great things with coding at Mitchell Nelson next year. We would like to congratulate Rebecca Fue. She has been selected to be part of the Learning Forward Academy. This academy involves professional conversation and dialogue with educators from around the world for the next two and a half years, and she was one of 30 educators selected for that. And we all know that TCAP testing began today. From all reports, Siobhan told me that she had been in every school, and that it went as well as that we could expect, and I want to thank Siobhan Davis Lewis for her leadership. She has worked very closely with the principals and with the assistant principals in ensuring that TCAP does go smoothly. So we will be testing tomorrow and also Thursday with TCAP. We have our final preschool registration day Thursday, April the 30th. It will occur from 8:30 until 3:30 at the administrative offices, and we will have preschool testing on February, May the 8th, also at the administrative offices. And then finally, we will have a retirement reception at the City Hall Rotunda at your next board meeting, which will be May the 12th at 5 o'clock, and everyone is invited to come and thank our retirees for their service and to wish them luck as they have rest and relaxation in retirement. I suppose that's what you do, I don't know. I don't think they do. I think they just continue and do subbing and volunteering in the schools, and the amazing work just continues that they've had for so many years. So we appreciate very much our retirees, and those are your communication items.
Thank you ma'am very much. I would like to add one thing to that, and I don't know whether all the board members have seen it, and I don't know whether it's public or not, but I would like to congratulate those teachers at John Pittard for the excellent job that you did on getting yourselves ready for TCAP tests. I don't know whether it didn't help for all the students or not, but I know it did for the teachers. Did you perform that in front of students?
No sir, but it did go viral, and we've already got about 2,400 hits.
Very good. It's very well done, very well put together, and your staff and you are to be commended for that. It's something that needs to go probably really viral across the country, okay?
She sent it by fax.
Oh, okay.
Yes, she has. Yes, we sent, we sent it to the State Department, for example, and did get a response from both the Commissioner and the Deputy Commissioners, that they very much enjoyed seeing that. So we've, we've sent it out there. I will say that several of the schools had celebrations, some of them did videos too. That particular one is one that I received, and made me smile yesterday, so I figured a few other people needed to smile too.
I'm sure everybody did a lot to get themselves prepared, not only for themselves, but also the students as well. The other day, when we were visiting over at Black Box, there was a very good review going on in those classrooms.
Right.
We were getting ready. All right, consent items?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barrett?
I wanted to add something to the minutes, or just in addition, the public comment, I asked Ms. Hawkins during our textbook adoption recommendations that if there's any public comment, I'd like to make sure that got into the record, into the minutes.
Okay.
And you already did.
I already posted it.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
I thought, I thought it was there.
I just wanted to make sure it got in.
Okay, all right. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Rineer and Dr. Brown both again, all right. All right, those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Thank you. All right, the action items. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, your first action item, I'm just going to introduce it, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson. But one of the things that we really need to do is get our textbooks, we are adopting social studies, we're purchasing social studies and purchasing math textbooks. We would like to get those in as close to the end, well, before school is out, if we possibly can. If not, in the past, we even have had teachers who have wanted them so badly that they've come in in the summer and picked them up. But hopefully, by ordering them early, we can, we can get those. In order to do that, we need to be able to take that money out of fund balance and also to adjust next year's budget, so at that point, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Anderson.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Board, what, what Dr. Gilbert's asked us to do is to get the textbooks so that teachers can have them for this summer, and to do that, it's a simple matter for us to take it out of our fund balance monies that are from this year, and then adjust it in our budget for, for next year, and lower our budget by the same amount. It's, nets out the same amount to us, but what it, what we have to do is get two different votes. One is to allow us to use the current year's fund balance dollars to spend to get the textbooks, because we can't, we cannot commit to buy something without it being funded appropriately. In other words, we couldn't buy them now and then pay for them in July, it wouldn't be appropriate. And we, we ran it by our auditors just to make sure we, we were interpreting it correctly, and they said, yes, we were. So we're going to ask you to approve the use of a million two in fund balance dollars so that we can purchase the textbooks for next year now, so we'll have them before the end of the fiscal year, which ends June 30th. That would be the first, the first motion we'd ask you to, to do.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Now we'd have discussion.
Share with us, please, Mr. Anderson, about the fund balance and where this leaves us.
Okay. In the fund balance, we are projecting, hold on, I'll get to that page. The fund balance, we're still going to end up being good for the 3% minimum required by the state. There it is, okay. We, we, if we take the money out of this year, it'll, it'll bring our fund balance down to $7,675,000 to end the, end the year with, and then we take the amount out of this so we can still come out, when we take that money out, we'll be down to $6,475,230 is what we project we'll end with. So you can see the difference is the million two difference that we've taken out. Will still put us in the same position, because we will not spend the money going forward in the next year's budget, because we're going to take that million two out of the next budget.
Do you have a percentage of how much, that 6 million, how much above 3%?
3% is right at 2 million, so it's, you know,
We're good.
4,475,000 above.
Okay, we're good, thank you.
Do we have other questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept. We have a second. Call the roll, please ma'am.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rineer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Chair Campbell?
Yes ma'am.
I have it.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Anderson?
Okay, the, the second part of that is to amend your budget that you approved last week, and what it does is it, it reduces our overall expenditures from $66,976,937 down to $65,776,937. So it's a million two that comes out of that, which changes the difference in our budget of about 2% of, from last year to this, to this year, as far as what we need, be an increase of 9.97 instead of 11.97. But as I said, it nets out the same, same amount. We're not spending any more money, we're just moving it to one, one year's budget versus another year's budget. So we ask for approval to amend your budget that you've approved to that, to lower it by a million two.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Rineer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barrett. Any other discussion or questions? Call the roll, please ma'am.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rineer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
And Chair Campbell?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for getting those numbers and figures for us so that we can, I know it's important, and teachers would love to have textbooks before they get gone for the summer.
Yes sir.
All right. Next item under action item.
Yes, next item is policy IS-11. This policy is one that we're bringing before you, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Baker in just a second, but you'll remember that last year, there was a law that was passed that said that TCAP grades had to be a, a part of the final grade of the student. This year, that, that law was changed. There was a law that was brought forward that said it, that it could be optional, but there was an amendment added that said that it can only occur, that option could only occur if the, if the scores were not received at least five days, I believe, before the end of the school year. And so because if that does happen, we want to be able to have that option, then we are bringing that before you, because we will need a reading tonight, and also a reading at the May 12th, I believe it is, meeting, so we can have that happen before the end of the year. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Baker.
Yes, they, they did amend Tennessee Code Section 49-1617 that required TCAP to be made part of students' final grades for the spring semester, to create that exception that if the school system does not receive the students' TCAP scores at least five instructional days before the end of the school year, then the school system may choose not to include those in the students' final grades. So we have taken IS-11, which is our policy that deals with that issue, and you will see at, I gave you a tracked version, at line 37, that language has been included in IS-11 to give us that option if we don't receive those scores in a timely fashion. And this, this is being brought to you because it was signed by the governor on Friday, and it was just released to the school systems by some of our organizations we belong to on Monday, and so that's why we immediately made this revision to bring to the board tonight, so we can get two readings in before the end of the school year, in case this occurs this school year.
Kelly, on the packet that you gave me?
Yes.
On IS-11, I don't have a line 37.
Um.
I go from 35 to 87.
Whoops.
Mine is, mine's the same.
Numbering is just wrong.
Okay, if you look.
Probably 88 should be 37, or 87 should be 37. Okay, thank you.
And if you look at what's online, I think the one that's online came out right, it must not have printed correctly.
Hang on.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
So this is for this school year?
Yes, in that, when the governor signed the bill, the bill states that it will take effect upon becoming law, so as soon as the governor signs it, it becomes a law. So this can apply to this school year.
My, my initial thought is if we're going to enter a school year with the thoughts that we're going to have that TCAP included in our fourth quarter, we can't remove it. We shouldn't remove it at, at the last minute. But tell me, I mean, I would like to hear otherwise from other board members and Ms. Baker, but, but if that, if, if a student is being told that the TCAP is going to be included in their fourth quarter grade, I think it needs to be included in the fourth quarter grade.
I think part of the problem, Kelly, that would be from the teacher's standpoint, if those teachers don't get those scores back before those final grades are figured, and it has happened before where we didn't get TCAP scores until after school was out. So it'd be very difficult then to add that score into the, the student's final grade, and I think all this does, it just says that if we don't get them back within five days, the last five instructional days, then we can still give those students their grades based on what they have done throughout the year, and not include the TCAP scores as part of it.
But I don't think we need to be deciding that three weeks before the end of school.
Well, I think the discussion has probably come up because of the legislature and the bill that was passed through the legislature and sent to the governor to sign. That's where the confusion was. Am I correct, Kelly, on that?
Yes, that, that legislation is giving school boards the option not to include the TCAP scores if they don't get the scores back within five instructional days at the end of the school year. Now, I, I believe last year, the state had a huge issue with getting the, the scores back timely, and school systems had to spend a lot of money reissuing report cards and calling in staff after they, they typically would have been dismissed for the year to go home to get that, those report cards reissued, and I believe that is, was probably the catalyst for this particular amendment that was placed on this bill.
And it could have a, a strong result with testing from the state level too, to make sure they get those scores back to teachers, include personnel, so they can include them in their grades. It's kind, it's kind of tough to figure all your students' grades if you've got 175 students and know that you get, you get the grades back two days before school's out and report card is supposed to go home, that's a bunch of work, bunch, for 175 students to include all those in there. I understand where you're coming from, I really do, but on the other hand, I'm looking at from the classroom teacher's perspective, so, I don't know. Ms. Rineer and then Ms. Phillips?
I believe that, just as, as has already been discussed, this came about because of what happened last year, and I'm thinking with a new commissioner of education, hopefully we won't have the same craziness that we did at the end of last year, but I think that we do have to go ahead and approve it now, just in case we run into that situation. Personally, this is only what Nancy Rineer thinks, I don't think we should have to include those scores, because you don't know what happens to Johnny on this particular day, and whether or not he's sitting there able to pay attention, or if he's falling asleep, or he's had a bad night, or he has a headache, or whatever. It's so hard for me, and having taught a million years, it's so hard for me to think that those poor babies have to have that included in their final grade. And I wish that we could find some legislators who would jump on my bandwagon and say that's not necessary, but because of the fact that we had the issue last year, I think that this is the best we can do.
I think, did Ms. Hawkins not tell me the other day that we are not going to have to include it at all, or were you?
They amended the bill.
The original bill had written to say that it wasn't going to have to be included, and then they stripped that out of the bill and, and put in this amendment that just gave the leeway with the five days.
Karen, would you?
We've actually been told by the State Department that next year, we probably won't have the TCAP grades by the end of the year because of the new assessment that we're giving. So they're going to have to have those grades, establish cut scores, and that's going to take a lot longer than we would normally have, but any year, we wouldn't know ahead of time if they're going to be here on time, so we would have to just have a measure in place in case they didn't come in, so that we had something to do. But in the future, we won't know until five days before school's out if we're going to have the grades or not to include. So that would, that's just, we've just been told that perhaps next year, we, we won't even have that option. This year, we, of course, didn't take social studies, so social studies won't be included. We won't have a TCAP grade included in that either. So just food for thought, because we will never know on the front end that this is what's going to happen until we actually hear from them.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, I just want to thank Ms. Smith for, because of her sensitivity to trying to send a consistent message to the children and families, and I appreciate you, you being sensitive to that. I agree though, that because of the, um, the money involved and the impact on our staff, if they had to come back and adjust to report cards and send out new report cards, that it, it may, it's probably best to approve it. I do wish the legislature had acted in a more timely way, since bringing this on school systems at the, you know, the 11th hour, so to speak, but I am appreciative of your, of your consideration for a consistent message. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
I agree with Ms. Rineer about the, don't include them at all, and I think that's a good idea, but anyway, and I agree with Ms. Phillips' point about the mon, time and monetary to get people to come back in, and the only thing I saw in this was line 33, if we could just put TCAP after Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, since we're using the acronym throughout.
I wondered if we missed that.
All right, well, you've had discussion, now we are, I need a motion to approve the policy or, on first reading?
So moved.
Or not? Thank you, Ms. Phillips, motion to approve the policy on first reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Call the roll, please ma'am.
Mr. King?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rineer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Campbell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. All right, next action item, Dr. Gilbert?
Your next action item is the 1516 calendar revision, and I'd like to give the listening, viewing audience a little background on that. We, as a district, have stockpile days. The rule is that in order to use those stockpile days, we have to have begun school, and so we would like to take a couple of those stockpile days, because we realize that we'll be facing a new assessment, we have new textbooks, and we have beginning of the year where our teachers really need to spend some time in professional development. So what we are recommending is that our half-day of students stay the same, which would be on Wednesday, August the 5th, but that we use two stockpile days for August the 6th, which is Thursday, and also August the 7th, which is Friday, and we have our first full day for students on Monday. That first full day will match the county calendar. Personally, I would have liked to have had the half-day butt up against that first full day, but we cannot use that and use our stockpile days. The other changes would be that on December the 18th and May the 26th, our teachers would have a half-day instead of a whole day, and that we have a teacher in-service day on March the 1st, which is the day that we have the election. And then finally, excuse me, I've got to get some more medicine, and that finally, on the April 7th, we had that down as a half-day PLC, but when you look at our calendar in March, we have several days that were out, including Good Friday and then the last, which butts up against the last week in March, so that gives us six days out there for us to come back on and have another half-day on April the 7th. In talking with some of the principals, we really feel that that's going to be a waste. But those are primarily your changes, so we would be looking at starting the student first full day on Monday, August the 10th. We would have a half-day for teachers and a half-day on both December the 18th and May the 26th. We would have, March the 1st would still be a day when our students would be out, but we would have that day as an in-service day, and that is Election Day, and then finally we would cancel the half-day of PLC on April the 7th and have a whole student day for those days. Any questions that you have about that?
Just a point of information.
Sure.
On the calendar that I have on the agenda, the month of April is blank, there's nothing there, so I thought maybe we were just going to take it all off.
We would.
We're going to have some happy kids.
Mr. Campbell? We're just going to be all in that month, which makes sense, because we're looking at a TCAP window next year that would start, and I didn't bring that with me, but I'm thinking it starts something like April the 15th or April the 18th, TCAP for next year.
Well, it's two parts, and so it started.
Right, the first part is in February, and then the second part is in April.
March.
March, okay, well, good, okay, right, and it runs through?
Through April.
April, right.
Ms. Rehner?
My comment would just be that, if at all possible, if we are to approve this tonight, that you post it right away tomorrow, because parents will be looking for this.
When you look at the students, as far as what it will impact them, what we are looking at there is that in, on April the 7th, instead of a half-day, they would have a whole day, and then instead of starting their first full day on August the 6th, their first full day would start on Monday, the 10th, but we would still have that half-day, the original half-day, in the first calendar, which would be August the 5th.
All right, April the 7th again, that is a, what kind of day?
Will be in a full day. It was in the original calendar, it was a half-day PLC day, so we're making that full student day.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have, I'm sorry, Ms. Phillips?
This is just a quickie. Does anyone know when the tax-free holiday is, the weekend? Is that?
Usually, I think it's usually the first weekend in August.
I was just thinking, if the children had their supply list before then, they could take advantage.
You're right.
And if we could find a way, if we could find a way to make sure families had that.
Good idea. We'll get those posted online.
Okay.
Should be able to do it before the end of the year.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the calendar as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rehner, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Brown, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
One quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, so given what we just talked about, about the TCAP, looking at the end of report card period is May 26th, so we've got to have those scores by May 21st, or they're not included.
And I think the one consistent thing we have heard is that next year we will not have those scores, because what's, and I'm not the testing expert, but after those tests have to be taken, they basically are looked at for validity, and so there's some post-test work that the state will need to do so that they're valid, and so they can improve it the next year, is the best way, I guess I can explain it, Karen, you can probably explain it better, but there will be some post-work that will be done with that, and so we are not expecting to get those back.
Okay, but May 21st would have been the day.
That's right.
So.
And should we call the TCAP, or should we call the PRC?
It'll be called, ten ready.
So in that policy that we just signed off on, it was very specifically calling it TCAP.
Do you know, Siobhan, if they are still considering ten ready part of the comprehensive, Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, or do you know if it will be?
The science exam will still.
Right, the science will stay the same.
Yes. Karen, I don't think the other departments are calling the Tennessee TCAP anymore. They're going to be under the label of ten ready.
I don't, it may, it's a part of the whole Tennessee assessment.
Right.
So that might.
Just call it state assessment.
Right, it needs to be addressed in the policy, not exactly.
Well, actually, they should, they need to fix it in the state law. The state law calls it TCAP.
Well, it's not the first state law.
I was going to, I was going to bring that up, too, because the law you gave us, it spells out that the local board has to do TCAP scores. It says TCAP, not whatever you want to call it.
So I guess that's where we're going to leave it at present.
So y'all made a good catch, that the legislature didn't make.
Thanks.
Kudos.
Well, that's nothing.
Ms. Smith says that will be the first of the last. All right. Your next action item is approval of the City Schools Foundation, two new board members, and those two board members that are being recommended are Doug Young and Brooke LaRoche.
Those recommendations come from where?
Those come from the City Schools Foundation.
Okay.
It's just in their bylaws that we.
Approve them?
Approve them, that's actually what we do, is we approve them.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve Mr. Young and Brooke LaRoche?
So moved.
So moved, thank you, Ms. Smith, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Phillips, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And none, thank you very much. Okay. Presentation of the 201516 budget. We're doing this, this board has already approved the budget after several hours of discussion and contemplation, and good discussion, I will say, too, because the board took a very active part, everybody did. But our board, with the suggestion of one of our members, felt like that we needed to present our budget tonight by Dr. Gilbert and maybe Mr. Anderson, to the general public so that they would understand what our budget is and where it comes from, and if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Phillips made that recommendation, and we appreciate that, and Dr. Gilbert, I will now let you present the budget. Thank you, Ms.
I will concur that you all did spend a few days and several hours going through this line by line. It is a budget that will form a foundation for the city schools for years to come, I feel, so tonight I want to explain to the public the why behind it, and I'm going to do that through a PowerPoint. When you look at the city schools, there is no doubt that children are at the center, and when you look at the vision that this board has constructed in their strategic plan, it is that Murfreesboro City Schools will create a culture of collaborative learning, focusing on the whole child, assuring success in the global community. Now, what that means is that everything we do then, every decision that we make, including financial decisions, really, those decisions are focused on children, so if you look at the triangle, the students are the ones that really form the why behind the decisions that you all make and the recommendations that we make as far as what's in the budget. At the same time, we recognize, and I think in the discussions you all have had tonight, that's pretty obvious, that we are looking at the whole child, so we are aware of that, and not only do we need to be serving the academic needs of the children and developing those needs, but we also need to be looking at the psychological needs, we need to be looking at the physical needs, we need to be looking at the safety needs, so when you look at this budget, then we are looking at developing a foundation that will help us assure that the whole child is going to succeed. The 1516 budget is built on the following beliefs. One, that the strength of a school district is dependent upon the talents of its people. We have talked about that tonight, we have talked about how important our teachers are, we've talked about how important our parents are, we've talked about how important the administrators are, and we also believe that the key to a successful school district is its ability to anticipate change and prepare for it. If there's anything that we have seen the last few years, it certainly is that ability to change to not only state rules, but also to the demographics we have faced. We are well aware that we are in a rapidly growing community, and it's very important that whatever we do in this budget, and what you all have voted on, will help us prepare for that change. So when you look at the why behind the 1516 budget, there really are three. One is the huge growth that we have experienced, another one is the data that lets us know that we need additional personnel, and then the third is the governor's raise, so I'd like to take each one of those and share with the public what we discussed. When you look at our budget, our budget last year, and our budget this year, you see a difference of 819 students, so when we projected last year what we would have, when we project next year what we will have, we have a difference of 816 students, 819 students, excuse me. That represents a 10.8% growth, which is a huge growth. In fact, if you look at the growth of the last five years, that growth is greater than all those years combined. In addition, you remember that we have opened Overall Creek, which represents an additional 150,000-plus square feet and 25 acres, and that is important that we take care of, those 150,000 square feet and also 25 acres. We also repurposed Reeves Rogers, it is now open and bursting at the seams, we might add, and we also repurposed Bellwood, it was a preschool, it is now a discovery school. So growth impacted the budget. If we're going to respond to that growth, if we're going to respond to the fastest growth that we've seen in this district, then what is in the budget is 20 extra teaching positions and three educational assistants, four buses and three bus teams, a technology assistant, and a database administrator, a plant, as far as our plant operation, we're switching over to our own custodial service, taking care of that ourselves, and then two maintenance personnel. Again, if you remember the growth, if you think about getting the students to school, if you think about the technology that they will need, the additional technology and the database we've heard tonight about what is happening with TCAP, we expect to have more data even that we're using to make decisions. If you think about the additional school, if you think about the repurposing, all of those things are going to require additional personnel, so the why of the growth results in what needs to be done. Then when you look at the data, and you think about what we need to do as far as responding to that data, if we look at the data, we had 1558 gifted students who were identified in 2013, we have 180 that will be projected to be identified by 1516, we have 645 English-language learners now, projected, we have projected 1,069 students with disabilities, and we will have 149 teachers with zero to five years experience. When you look at that data, then we need to be able to respond to that data. In order to do that, we are asking for an additional gifted coordinator, two psychologists, two comprehensive development teachers, a speech-language pathologist, 3.25 ESL teachers, and then remember those teachers that we had with the zero to five years, we're looking at six academic coaches to help teachers increase their capacity. Then finally, we had the governor's proposed raise. In February, the governor announced that he was going to give a 4% raise for all teachers, but here's the rest of the story. When you look at that in February, in that announcement that was made, it was only for the BEP positions, and it was only the raise itself was based on the state average salary. What that means to us is that those state funds are going to fall short of covering raises for all teachers, and they do not cover support personnel. So again, when you look at our budget that you have adopted, you are looking at growth, you are looking at the fact that we have data of our students, the diversity of our students, our additional students, and their needs, and then finally, the raise. So with the raise, we have to remember that no one received a raise last year, and that what we're recommending this year is that 4% of all of our personnel, our teachers and support staff, receive the raise of 4%. What we know is that we are competitive, we're becoming more competitive as far as the needs of quality teachers and quality personnel. You cannot have excellence in a school district if your people are not excellent, and that's what we said in the very beginning. We believe that a district is going to be as good as its people. So we feel like that the 1516 budget responds to the demographics of our children, of our staff, and of our community and their needs. We do believe that the 1516 budget will strengthen the district's structures to anticipate and respond rapidly to change, and in order for us to do that then, and finally, as a result, we believe that it builds a foundation for our students for the future. So that is the reason that the budget items were in the budget, that is the reason that you passed the budget, and I'll be happy, Mr. Anderson will be happy to answer any questions or any comments that the board would have about that budget.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Do we have questions pertaining to the budget? Ms. Phillips?
I have comments.
Then Ms. Rehner, comment, okay?
I just still have comments, and mine are just a little bit long, so just bear with me. First of all, I want to commend Mr. Campbell, because I thought he did an outstanding job leading the dialogue about the budget throughout the budget process, and I appreciate that. You know, community dynamics and politics change, over the years, we have had different processes for approving the budget. Sometimes they were approved at budget meetings, sometimes we were asked to hold approval of the budget to the regular scheduled board meeting, and we were also encouraged by City Hall to review the budget process for the public and to have dialogue about it at the regularly scheduled meeting, because they didn't want our board to be perceived as a rubber stamp, rubber stamping board. And so one of the things that I particularly am interested in is, I'd like the board to consider possibly having some of the conversations at televised meetings. Now, Mr. Campbell and several others pointed out that all of our meetings were duly, what's the right word?
Advertised?
Advertised, all the i's publicized, all the i's were dotted and all the t's were crossed, absolutely, that is true, but I look at it differently, I look at it from a different perspective. First of all, why do we even have televised meetings? Well, it is to make the process, our political process, more accessible to our community, and many of the people interested in the city school system are parents. Well, on a school night, they're at home at 6 o'clock, getting dinner on the table, looking over homework, getting past, making sure everything's done, and it's very difficult for them to access us at a meeting, you know, across town at Central Office. So I would love to see us move to having some of that, especially the vote, the vote for the budget, move to being done on a regularly scheduled board meeting. I just think it makes us more accessible to our community. I just think it makes us more accessible to our community. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I completely support everything in the budget. I think that the budget enhances Murfreesboro City Schools and our staff and our families, the children, and that's what really counts. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments? Mr. Barrett?
I'd like, yeah, it was a very lengthy process. I'd like for the state to fully fund our BEP. You know, they've come up short for years, so I'm gonna say that right now. This budget, we're investing in our future, especially our new teachers, as Dr. Gilbert pointed out, and our students. We have a large, varied populations coming up, and we're recognizing that, and we're investing in those students. And we went through this line by line, every expenditure, discussed every aspect of it, revenue, expenditure, and we had lengthy discussions, and, you know, I appreciate all the board's comments during that time and during those discussions, so.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
I do appreciate Mr. Anderson and his staff, and Dr. Gilbert, for the great thought that was put behind the budget. What I want people to know is that our board, we definitely were putting the children first in our thoughts and in our considerations with the teachers coming closely behind, that our children, the people, the decisions that impacted our children and the people that are around them were the highest priority in our decision-making process. And I do appreciate that we all value that and put our students first.
Ms. Reneer?
Well, I guess I want to echo basically what everyone's said so far, but one of the things that I found and have found through the years, the short time that I've been associated with the board, and looking back at the board for many years as a teacher sitting out there, it's really such a positive thing to me to see what every one of you, us, brings to the table. You, Dr. Gilbert, and Mr. Anderson, and your departments, and the principals, and everyone, all the administrators have brought us this budget, and then take the time as we go line by line to explain everything in the budget. And I know I had a million questions about, well, what does that mean? Who does that affect? Whatever, and we all did. And I think because of her experience, Mrs. Phillips is just an asset because she has done this for so long, and I think that what she's saying is just, you know, very appropriate. However, we could go on and on and on if we had to wait every two weeks to do the budget process. I see what you're saying, and I...
Just at least the vote.
The vote.
Yeah.
And Dr. Brown made a comment at one of our meetings about, he didn't feel exceptionally well with our budget last year, and I felt the same way he did, because there were some things that we knew we were leaving out, people that we were leaving out, teachers were being left out as far as the raise, when others within the city or within the state possibly were getting one. So I feel personally really glad that we put the children first, we put those people into place, hopefully with this budget, that need to be there for our babies in those classrooms. But we also were able to do something for our teachers and our administrators.
Okay. Do you have a comment? What do you think?
You know, I came in this process right in the middle last year. I did not realize the teachers did not get a raise last year. I missed that. I'm glad that they're getting a raise this year, hands down. Name me any other profession where you did not get a raise, and yet it did not stop you in the job you were doing. And these people are professionals, and I'm glad that we're paying them and treating them as such. They ought to be commended for the job they're doing.
Other comments? Ms. Phillips?
I have one last quick one.
One more?
Just one quickie, and that is, I still urge that over the course of the next budget year, any incoming money, since we are so close to the line on our fund balance, that we consider protecting the fund balance a little bit.
Mr. Barrett?
Unless anybody else, I wanted to give everybody else a chance before, but I could be behind the televised vote, Ms. Phillips. I think it's a good idea. I've been asking for years, I know Ms. Smith brought up during our budget meeting, but the long-range planning, you know, we keep talking about that, especially the big-ticket items, you know, coming up, so we can start getting behind that and to start planning for that in the future.
Here.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. And short-range?
And short-range.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? I will say, I will echo, I think, what Ms. Reneer said about, and everybody has talked about teachers, but, well, I guess it's Mr. King, but I think it's great, not only are we able to provide a 4% raise for teachers, but we're also doing it for all of our other employees. And I think your teachers and your principals will agree that your cafeteria staff, your custodial services, your EAs, your MDAs, your office personnel, they all make a major They make a contribution to students' well-being and their academic standards, maybe not as much as that classroom teacher, but I was glad we were able to include all of our employees in that 4%. All right. Thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for your presentation. We appreciate it very much. And those of you that are watching this telecast at home or look at it later, if you have questions on the budget, don't hesitate to give us a call. We'd be glad to explain as much as we can. All right. Next item.
Okay, your next item, we have a revenue and expenditure report, personnel report, and attendance report. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Board members, your revenue report is for the end of March. We had a February one and a March one, so just make sure you're looking at the March one, and it is 75% of the fiscal year through March, and we're showing a net income of $4,781,851. Last year at this time, we had $4,872,312, so it's about $100,000 difference. A lot of that is, as you go to the next page on your revenue side, the revenue is, you'll see a big difference in the percentage from 88.1% at the very bottom of the page for last year at 81.1%. The big difference there is, if you go up to line number four, other local revenue, and you can see, that's when we bought all the computers, and we got the money from the city for the computers. So we had to show it as a revenue, and that's why it is, looks totally out of whack with the rest of the budget, and that's the reason why, is because that was put in later. On the expenditure side, the same thing comes into play on the expenditures, and that is on line 16, where last year's expenditures were greater at 76.3%, your bottom percentage on the middle of the page, versus this year at 68.7%. So we're in good shape right now in our budget from what we had projected. We feel pretty good about it. Since its average right now is 68.7, and we're at the 75% part of the year, we feel like we're in good position right now, moving forward. So if anyone has any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions on the budget? All right, Mr. Anderson, continue.
Okay. Next item is the pupil-teacher ratio and the number of students we have. Our numbers right now, we dropped seven students from last month at this time. What's kind of interesting about this particular one is, we didn't drop any of the regular ed students. Well, I take that back, we dropped three, but the seven was, a lot of it was in pre-K, which doesn't affect our BEP monies. The other interesting thing I wanted to bring up, remember during the budget sessions, I had indicated that we grew more in periods six and seven, and so I just did some calculations on it. The first, when we received the information from the state about how much growth money we were going to get, it was based only on periods two and three of the enrollment numbers. Well, now, they will include periods six and seven, and we've grown on average 75 additional students from period two, three to period six, seven. That's why I pointed out to you that I do anticipate us getting some additional growth monies. The state does recalculate the growth, and they do it statewide. They throw everybody back into the pool again, and then split it up, but we won't know that number until June 30th, the last possible day. I was at a conference this, yesterday and today, and they were telling us that that's how they'll do it, and we'll get the information, they said by June 30th, which means June 29th or June 30th. But that's why I had indicated to you that I felt pretty good that we should get some more, since we grew so many more students during that time. The other good information is that kids love coming to school. We have 97% attendance rate again, we're back up to the 97, and our pupil-teacher ratio is average K through six at 20.1% overall. It's 19.59 K3 and 21.04, four through six. So our enrollment held very well for this period, and this is the last accounting period that the state uses for calculating their numbers on their growth. So if I have any questions on that, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Back to my agenda here. All right. Any other business to come before this board tonight?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very appreciative that Murfreesboro City Schools was part of the new Commissioner of Education's tour of the state. I was kind of hoping that we would get to meet her, and we had a nice visit at Black Fox. It was an informational session for her, but also for us. It could have gone on for days, but we had our 30-minute window of time. But I do feel appreciated, and that Murfreesboro City Schools was counted in the mix as part of her Tennessee tour.
I can remember early on, when she, right after she got that appointment, she said that she was going to visit every school district in the state. So...
That's impressive.
She's often doing it, and she, I guess she'll come back to Wilford County maybe sometime later, I don't know, but always get the best first. Okay, Ms. Reneer?
I just have a question on the personnel report. Do we know how many retirees we have?
We've got 10 so far.
10, okay. And have, didn't, do we still have an April 15th cutoff as far as those who plan to return? Is that...
No, no.
It's what now?
If they've been returned, we've got June 15th, June 15th.
Okay. So they could still let you know in June?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the date, Mr. Ringstaff, that we have to notify those that are not being re-employed?
This year, June 15th.
Okay.
And that all changing for next year.
Right, okay, all right. All right. Anything else coming before this board tonight? Mr. Barrett?
I'd like to encourage everyone at home to come and see all the wonderful artwork our city school kids have done in the art, in the city hall routine out here. I had the privilege to come here for the, what day was that? Couple of weeks ago.
It was a couple of weeks.
And we had all the children here, and they got their prizes. It was a wonderful time, so I encourage everyone to come and check it out. It's free.
It was packed.
Dr. Brown and I were looking at some of them tonight during the reception time, and I tell you what, there's some exceptional artists out there.
There is, for sure.
Great art teachers.
All right, if no other business coming before this board, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. King. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.